Chairman Smith, I think County Council has a very good point. But what I would like to see in the motion are the ones that agree with the preferred project is what I've been going off, the yeses and the noes. For instance Supervisor Hamburg said he disagreed with 20 and 21. So if...
Okay, 20 is Mason Hyde.
Correct.
21 is Lovers Lane.
Lovers Lane.
Correct.
You would be agreeing with alternate C?
Alternate C.
Right.
So we can do it that way, say whether it's agreeable with the preferred project or...
Let's see if we can get agreement or, and then get the motion and kind of do it in an organized fashion. Supervisor Pinches.
Madam Chair, what I would recommend is have a little respect for the district supervisor and let the district supervisor of those that are in their district, have them the opportunity to make a motion, either they want to leave it or they want to change it, but let the district supervisor take the lead on this.
She tried.
She did, she did.
Well, the other suggestion by council that was clumping them by, organizing them by the land use designation, I think you said that, council, for instance.
I tried to, Carrie.
If you're looking at number four to PS, then you're also looking at number 33 to PS, those are similar, correct? So if we made, could that be one motion to make those changes?
We could put any number into one motion if we...
Well, she, yeah. Yeah, because...
As long as it's helpful to staff.
Right.
What's number five? Can you tell what about number five? Because that's kind of, you know...
Well...
Are you familiar with that one?
There was a whole process when they were going through all this. And people did come and testify, you know, I'm going back, I've been dealing with this since 1990. And I thought it was a done deal in 2003, we just needed the EIR. Number five is where it is, it's in the Cowpela area. I've driven to most of those spots, I've looked at them. I've also taken the land use maps, seen what surrounded them. I was, you know, I'm going to let you people make the motion and I'll do my comment and, because I tried to do that, one through six.
Well, what about seven, eight, and nine?
Let's start out with one through six.
Oh, well, I can go, I'm okay.
I did have some questions on number seven.
You had questions about seven?
Yes.
Are you making a...
What about eight and nine?
Are you making a motion one through six?
I am making that motion.
I'll second.
To go with the preferred project recommendation, which are yes on one through six.
Now, is this, is this, don't you mean that property?
Is this what?
It's okay, is this the okay way to do it?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, I, yeah, sure. I, yeah, sure, well, if we can get it done.
Well...
So we're, so...
So we're leaving out seven in my motion, so I'm doing one through six.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Brown to approve the land use changes.
One through six.
One through six to the preferred project delineation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a motion.
We're just saying yes on those.
I second it.
And we have a second by Supervisor Pinches. Supervi, did you want to comment Supervisor Hamburg?
No ma'am.
Okay Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you Madam Chair. Well, again, I have some concerns with item three, change 43 acres of Ag 40 to RR1. Now, if someone can tell me that's 43 acres that is already fully developed with houses and parceled, and it's not in productive ag, I'm happy to go along with it. Otherwise, I have concerns. And then number five is eight acres of ag to eight acres of RR1.
So let's get, see if we can have staff comment on those two. Do you have comments on those two?
Looks like currently in ag production for a significant portion of that.
Yes, that's number three, and appears that there's some ag use, it's like the east side of the river. It's harder to tell down in this area.
And number five, is that that little square?
Yeah, five is down here. And I don't know whether this could be pasture, it's hard to tell from this exactly.
So we're going to make that RR1, and it looks like it's adjacent to a large ag parcel above it. Or is that on Central Avenue?
This is Freeway North State.
Well, again, I've got concerns without having the chance to look at it in more detail, it looks like we're taking ag off the map.
Supervisor Brown. And were you sitting on the Planning Commission back in 2003?
I was.
Okay. And I think you remember they did the community plans for each one of the communities going through Cowpela, the Forks, and Towneage.
And a lot has changed since 2003.
And people did come in and testify. Is there someone here that came forward on one through six?
I don't, well, it's not one ownership by any means.
Pardon? Yes. We're talking about ag land. Devin, I would like to ask you a question, is that okay?
Sure, yes, as long as she comes forward.
Come on Devin.
Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau.
Thank you. How many people have been knocking down your door for the rezoning of this ag?
That would be none to this point.
Any neighbors?
No, but our board has not discussed these either, recently.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, this is so hard, you know, I think one question that comes up Devin, since you were standing there, you can stay there, I'm not going to ask you a question, but reading the Farm Bureau's comments on this document, you know, the Mike Anderson letter, I mean, one thing he was, he was pretty adamant about was, you know, I could find it here, was this ag land conversion. So, you know, what is the, I mean, what is the Farm Bureau position on this kind of a Ag 40 conversion to RR1?
Devin Jones, Mendocino County Farm Bureau, without looking at the specific example, I can't speak for my board. I mean, typically our policy has been in the past that, you know, based on that letter, what I said, looking at all the alternatives, they're all impact agriculture. So we don't technically usually support any project that takes agriculture out of production for precedent-setting purposes. Sometimes we'll go neutral on certain projects when we have a split decision on our board, but that's typically our policy. Now, that being said, you know, the other thing that I've mentioned before is, you know, there are concerns with not looking at smart growth, proper implementation of development, and sprawl issues. We've seen that in the past where something like this may not go forward with an impact to a specific parcel in agriculture, but in the long run, we will see further impacts to rangeland production, sprawl, you see at Anderson Valley area, and other sorts of situations that move forward. So it's not something that I can easily speak to, but that's typically our policy.
Yeah.
That is, number five is eight acres? That's the total?
Yeah.
It's zoned, it's zoned Ag 40, but it's eight acres, right? Maybe that's the reason it should be changed. I mean, if you look, it's eight acres in total, and you got at least, what, four or five buildings there, I mean, about the only thing you could run is maybe a horse and a cat on that property, but anyways.
And number one is the only one that didn't originate from the 2003 process, made it through the 2007. At least five of these, number one originated from the 2007.
The question is, why was it zoned Ag 40 in the first place if it's an acre parcel?
I'd like to go to council because, because we've had a break since the discussion earlier, right? And I'm going back to the specifics on the public hearing, because I want to make sure that we're doing this correctly. And remember when we get to the part where public comment is no longer permitted, the matter's before the board, we need to, so if we're going down the path of now having motions, I just would like your input on, should I close the public hearing as we continue this engagement?
No, I don't think you should, because it's clear that you're not going to be done today.
We're not going to.
And particularly if you get into any kind of policy discussions, you know, the public wants, will want to weigh in on that as well.
Then council, how do you, then there's no delineation between the public comment, the various components of the notice public hearing process, where the board's in deliberation and we're, because it's very clear that we have motions and the deliberation is just amongst the board members. So as long as you don't have a problem, I just wanted to bring it up.
I have a problem with this, you just need to give direction to staff, and that's what you're trying to do right now.
Well, you were saying we should take motions, we're going down the path of voting.
Well, right, instead of just, you know, raising your hand and saying, okay, I think staff should do this, let's make it very clear for the record what you want staff to do in this regard.
Okay, and my recollection is that we do have a motion on the floor, we were discussing that motion, so we're fine. And that was a motion by Supervisor Brown and a second by Supervisor Pinches, that we approve the land use changes, items one through six, consistent with preferred project delineation.
And it was seconded by?
I said that was your pinches. So that's what, that's the discussion to date? So, board members, any, are we ready to vote?
Well, you know, the one I have a problem with is the 43 acres, you know, I can sort of go along with Johnny's idea that, you know, the littler one could go to RR1, but the 43 acres, that's a, that's a big chunk of ag land to, you know, to divide up potentially into one acre parcels, that one's a little problematical to me.
Well, that's the reason Supervisor, that I was trying to focus the discussion because of the late hour and the ones where we seem to have agreement and already we're just done.
But I'm good with all the rest of it.
Then I'm, and that is number three Supervisor Hamburg?
Yes, true.
I'm willing to amend my motion.
Take it out.
Will the second amend as well to take out number three? So it would be one, two, four, five, and six?
Well, I'll find, I want to move this process along.
Yeah.
But you got to realize, Dan, and five is a great example, what they're trying to do is recognize what's on the ground now and not necessarily the zoning, you know what I mean?
I get it.
But I'll withdraw my motion, or my second.
No, you're just going to approve Supervisor...
No, I withdraw my second.
Okay, and I'll second Supervisor Brown's motion.
Or amended motion, right?
Amended motion.
Okay. So I think we're clear on that, it's items now one through six with the exception of number three. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you Madam Chair. The concern with item five is the domino effect, that you rezone that, and yeah, gee, it's only eight acres. And it creates the domino effect going both north and south that further impacts the ability particularly of the parcel to the north to remain in productive ag.
Yeah.
And I think that's typically a concern of the Farm Bureau, is, and that's the issue we're going to get into possibly at some length with the Tulleni Lane parcels. By themselves, they're absolutely not an issue, but what, what future impact do they have to surrounding parcels? And I think there's a solution with that one that may involve a contract rezone, but on this one, I am concerned that it does put at risk the neighboring ag land, so it may not be eight acres, it may be 40 acres or 60 acres.
I think we've been down this path before, this sounds like a familiar discussion from back at the general plan.
I think if somebody walked in here right now and said, which way to San Francisco, we couldn't give them clear direction.
So, okay, we, we have a motion and we have a second, and everyone's clear on it, any more discussion to the motion, I think we need to, if we are going to move this along, we need to do that and vote. So any more discussion? Okay, let's vote by the buttons. Is the clerk clear on the motion, the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes with Supervisor McCowen dissenting.
Okay, thank you. So, moving along, where do we want to go next?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion for items 20 and 21.
Okay.
That we not make those changes.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for discussion on items number 20 and 21, so we would be not in concurrence with the preferred project, is that correct?
Right, we'd be maintaining the existing zoning on both those parcels.
Okay, so discussions to the motion, do we have any? Okay, so we, seeing none, we will, well, let's vote by the buttons.
Motion passes with Supervisor Pinches dissenting.
Okay.
And...
Supervisor.
One question, we can approve these land use changes and then independently we could adjust some of the percentages within the mixed use categories if we get to that point and we think we want to move some of the percentages around.
Yes, I think when you get to the discussion of the document itself, which contains the descriptions of what those mixed use designations are or other designations, you, as long as you understand the implications for the environmental document, you could make some changes there.
Thank you. I will move approval of items 25 through 29 as they show in the preferred alternative.
Okay, so 25, yes, 26, no, 27, yes.
25 through what?
25 through 29.
Second.
That's for the preferred project?
Yes.
Yeah.
25 through 29.
Madam Chair, could I make a comment? The 27 and 20, excuse me, 25 and 26 are alternatives, so you wouldn't want to...
That's, yeah, that's right.
Well, consistent with the preferred alternative, so one is yes, one is no.
And so it does make the chart useful for this process. Okay, any more discussion to the motion and the clerk is clear on the motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so that's items 25 through 29, all those, or no, let's vote by the buttons.
Maybe.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
And then, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Items 31 through 35, consistent with the preferred alternative?
I'm going with the preferred project.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Supervisor Hamburg, a second by Supervisor McCowen on items number...
31 through 35.
31 through 35?
That's going with the preferred project?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
31 through 35.
Okay, and the clerk is clear? Any discussions to the motion? Supervisor McCowen?
Oh.
Okay, so no, no discussion on those, we're clear on that, let's vote.
Oh, sorry about that.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, making progress. On to other items supervisors.
I'll make a motion to deny number 30.
So we have a motion by Supervisor McCowen, a second by Supervisor Hamburg on item number 30. Staff, could you pull up the map on 30 to, just to give a look at that?
Would that motion be to leave it consistent with alternative C?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. Is that right?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, no, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Excuse me, sorry.
And it's, I think we just need to see the location. Okay. Okay, any discussions to the motion on item number 30? Okay. Clerk is clear?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, so let's vote on that one.
Motion passes with Supervisor Pinches dissenting.
Okay, thank you. I had marked from earlier, item 20 and 21. Oh, we did those, I just didn't mark them, okay, great. It's quite a bit of progress. We do.
Now, what we haven't done other than the RCHD C parcel, which of these are particularly sensitive to the settlement of the lawsuit? And how many of them have we undone?
You already done 29, that's RCHD property.
Well, we did that one, but...
On the matrix I presented earlier, I had areas 22, 25, 26, 29, 32, and 37 in the near term, and then 15, 16, and 34 in the longer-term category.
So we covered 34.
I think you've done...
We went yes on 34.
And 32 also, so 37 was one of the ones you referenced?
22 and 37, I don't think you've done.
No.
Or 15 or 16, which were mixed uses in the Forks area.
Well, I'm willing to make a motion for number 37.
Second.
And that would also take care of number 38.
Right.
Motion for 37, 38 for the preferred project?
Correct.
37, yes, 38, no.
Is that correct Supervisor?
Did you just, did you second that?
I did.
Okay, Carrie did.
So is that, is that correct Supervisor?
Correct.
Okay.
37 and 38, both yes, preferred project?
No, they're consistent with the preferred project, so 37, yes, 38, no.
What about 39?
I'm willing to...
Should you go preferred on that?
I'm willing to include that.
Okay, would the second include 39, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we've knocked off three more.
So we now have, we now have a motion for 37, 38, and 39 per the preferred project on the list, and that was made by Supervisor McCowen, and it's seconded by Supervisor Brown. Any discussion on that item before we vote? Okay, we can vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey.
And?
I'm going to make a motion, this is in my district, for items 15 and 16 for the preferred project.
I'll second the motion.
15 and 16, could we pull that up on the map, on the board, please?
Are these two on State Street?
Yeah.
15?
15, 16.
And the location there is?
One is, it's a former pear tree, pear orchard that was...
And a former vineyard.
And a former vineyard, but it was land owned by MRC, formerly LP. They think it pulled out the vineyard, not positive, but I think that they have, I know the pear trees are gone, so it is barren land, has good access in that particular area, and I'm sure they're going to work it out, but this is part of the settlement, correct?
And where, where are the roads? It doesn't front on your...
Lake Mendocino, no, they're inroads.
Lake Mendocino Drive.
And I'm not quite sure...
And it goes out that way to the dam.
So they take access off of Lake Mendocino Drive?
This is DOT.
Right.
Right here.
So it doesn't front on, is there, there's no frontage on State Street?
This piece fronts.
Yeah, that is State Street right there, isn't it?
Right here.
Yeah.
There.
So that one corner of, is it 16?
Yes.
So Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you Madam Chair. Well, again, this is 85 acres of land currently zoned ag, suitable for ag, suitable for grapes, suitable for pears, a wide range of ag uses. Sitting here today, taking a two-minute look at it, I'm not willing to vote to take ag off the map, and you can see, there is very little development of any kind on this property, and it also borders the river on the east. It looks like prime ag land to me. And I grant you, there's some development around it, we rezone this, and we'll see more pressure for more development.
To staff, is that curvature there, that is, that is the Russian River, right?
The Russian River?
Yeah, right.
So we're looking at 15 and 16.
Right. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you Chair Smith. These two particular parcels have been debated at least in the last 22, 23 years. It's the same with the former wood property that Holmes and Gome, Hill and Gomes actually developed, they have, I think it's called, I'm trying to think what is the issue, boron in the soils, I don't know, I see, Roger, can you tell us about the soil types in that particular parcel owned by MRC? It's Roger Kruger.
I'm Roger Kruger, representing Mendocino Redwood Company and Mendocino Forest Products Company. You ask about the soil types. Can you speak into the mic? I'm Roger Kruger, with, representing Mendocino Redwood Company and Mendocino Forest Products Company. You talk about the soil types. From North State Street, about halfway over to the railroad track, it's pretty much rock. If you kick away the soil, you'll, you'll be down to very hard rock. The remainder of the property, about halfway to the railroad tracks, to the railroad tracks, is silt. It was a former prune orchard. The prune facility here in Mendocino County went out about 1995. The last crop that was taken off that property was about 95, 96, and it had to be trucked to the Sacramento Valley, so prunes were pretty much uneconomic, and the prune orchard was taken out. Between the railroad tracks and the river, it is actually agricultural soil. It was a former pear orchard, 28 acres. We ran that for a couple of years, and the pear orchard actually made money. Then about the year 2000, we could not get anybody to lease the pear orchard. The last year, it had lost quite a bit of money. The last year, it had lost quite a bit of money, about $50,000, and we ripped out the pear orchard because it would become an insect infestation. So, right now, while some of you may think we have prime ag land, and there's a great future in this ag, we have a lease that I just finished with a guy we call the Haymaker, and we allow him to spread seed on the area that we own, and then he mows that grass and sells the hay. He doesn't charge us, and we don't charge him. So, we make absolutely nothing off this, and the reason that we have him there is because the grass is a fire hazard, and we have to keep the grass down, so it's an absolute break-even. This land was purchased, I worked on the purchase in 1994, for the expansion of the sawmill. The southern boundary of this land is the Mendocino Forest Products Sawmill, which has the log decks also. And we also, on the riverside of the tracks, we have a dry yard for drying redwood lumber. It was purchased so that we could expand the sawmill, and we have not done any expansion on that yet, but at the present time, we're running one shift. And as you know, Mendocino County is growing much more wood than is being harvested, and at some point, we might want to run two shifts. At the present time, the land area that we have is maxed out. We don't have any more room to store logs for the winter. So, this area was supposed to be used for log decks and for drying lumber. So, if this was kept in ag land, we would not be able to do the expansion, because what we need is an industrial site. Between the railroad tracks and State Street, it's currently industrial zone. From the railroad tracks to the river, it's ag zone, but we would like to have it the way it appears in the preferred plan of the next use, so that it would allow us to expand the sawmill if that became necessary.
Are you surrounded by ag? Or is it part of an agricultural corridor?
No. The Andy Nickel owns the parcel of ag land that is to the north. Immediately to the north, if you would refer to the photographs that he's provided you, you'll see it's all houses. Then, on State Street, which is the western side, you cross the street and you have an auto dealer. To the south, it is the sawmill. So, what we have really there is about 28 acres of what you would call ag land, and it would make a great hobby for somebody, but right now, it's totally uneconomic to work as ag.
Thank you.
Well, it's currently zoned industrial, correct?
Between the railroad tracks and North State Street, that parcel is industrial zone.
And what you're describing is that the intention in purchasing it was for expanding sawmill operations, and from what you've described, that is still the intention, although we're not there yet where it would be economically viable to be running a second shift and need the additional storage space for dry yard and so forth. But I think I hear you saying that the company's intention is still to use that for industrial purposes. Is that correct? So, if parcel 16, and that's the smaller of the two vacant parcels, if that were to be zoned industrial, that's what the company prefers? I mean, there's, there's this mixed-use designation that staff is recommending, but under mixed use, a variety of things besides industrial would be allowed, but I don't think you necessarily want a bunch of single-family homes next door to your mill site.
Well, as long as it remains in the MFP ownership, then the intention would be for a potential industrial expansion.
Right, so zoning it industrial seems to be the best fit for your intentions for them.
That's the way it is now, and that's the way we'd like to see it. But the choices are going to mixed use, so mixed use is fine with us.
Well, but also, from what you're saying, there'd be no conflict with what you intend for the property and industrial zoning?
Say that again.
That there's no conflict between what you want to do with the property and industrial zoning?
That's correct.
Thank you. I would request of the maker of the motion and the second that we maybe split these two items, or at least change the motion, so that 16 would be industrial?
I'm a little bit confused if I may venture.
Well, let's go to, let's go to Supervisor Hamburg was next, and then Supervisor Pinches.
I second the motion, but I'm confused. What, 16 is already industrial?
Right.
Roger, what?
But the motion Supervisor was to change it to mixed use.
I understand that, yeah.
So Supervisor McCowen is asking that that, that we bifurcate these and make different, have a different motion on each one to take different action, right?
Potentially, and, because I certainly support 16.
Roger, why in 16? It's already zoned industrial. Why would you want to change it to mixed use?
The mixed use was presented to us as one of the uses, and mixed use would be fine.
But you're already industrial, you already got what you want as far as zoning.
This is true.
Why would you want to change it?
We did not propose having the change.
So, if we'd done nothing, it would be industrial, parcel fixed, item 16?
Yes.
It's industrial now?
Yes.
So, we just leave it?
You just sooner leave it that way, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's take that one up.
Okay, so let's go to the maker of the motion with Supervisor Brown. So Supervisor Brown, do you, do you agree that we'll separate these out?
I will.
Okay. So, let's just withdraw, let's withdraw the motion, the previous one, and then we'll start over. How is that?
Okay.
So, does the second agree, we're just going to withdraw?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go back to Supervisor Brown to make another motion.
Start with 16.
Okay, I move to approve the preferred project on item 16, which is yes for the change.
But that's changing it.
Well, no, 16 would be...
Why don't we just drop 16 off the list?
Well, why don't we make a motion that 16 stays industrial? Because that's what we're having the company representatives say they prefer.
I got it, okay.
So Supervisor Brown, what would be your motion?
Well, can't we take them both together?
No, that's been the reg... That's what we just withdrew that motion?
Because we have some disagreement on 16.
Yeah, so if you would just go ahead and make, pick one or the other and just make a motion?
Then item 16 will be under the land use alternative C. No change.
Well, and to be absolutely clear, it's to retain industrial zoning, correct?
Correct.
So, that's a motion for item number 16.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Supervisor Brown, and we have a second by Supervisor Pinches. Any more discussion just to that item? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So now Supervisor Brown, let's go back to 15.
Okay, I move item 15, number 15, for the preferred project.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Supervisor Brown, and a second by Supervisor Pinches on number 15, which would be the preferred alternative for that? Yes, Supervisor Hamburg?
Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Mowgli about this item. I noticed that the preferred project was yes, but the, both A and B were no. And what was, what was the thinking on that by the department, or... I mean, was it the loss of ag land? Was that the main factor that you were looking at?
To be honest with you, I don't know the history of, of all of these, how these were derived. Director Gonzalez might have a comment.
I believe that was the issue, was the, was the loss of the ag land, and that's why we had looked at alternative A as another possibility here for the board to consider. And again, one other thing that I'd like to add is these particular ones, they're shown by having an asterisk, and these are the ones that originated actually from the 2007 UVA process through the additional public meetings that were held in front of the board.
So, this one was added in 2007?
Correct.
And that was at the board level?
That was at the board level, yes.
And the asterisk does allude to that.
Yeah, so it started at the planning commission, and then it went to the board level.
And planning commission, I, could you refresh my memory on where they went with this?
A planning commission took 15 and 16 and put it into the preferred project.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to oppose the motion. I am going to support retaining this parcel in ag zoning, and I'll note that ag zoning is compatible with industrial, which is the mill property, and single-family residential is not compatible with a mill operation, so, and, so I, I just favor keeping it in ag. I also think before we vote, since the property owner is present, in fairness, we should probably allow him to make a pitch for it.
Sure, that would be fine. Would you like to come forward?
My name's Andrew Nickel, and I only own 18 acres at the north end of this parcel, and I did send you a blown-up aerial photo of it, which Mr. Kruger's company owns most of it, and they are in favor of the mixed use, and I am as well, but if you look at the north end of this, the happiness is mobile home park is right there. It's with, I mean, those trailers are within five feet of my property line. Just recently, all the property along North State Street was rezoned R3, so it's multifamily residential. The West Fork subdivision, all is right there, it's, you know, on the west side of it is the mini storage. It's pretty much surrounded by development at this point. All the utilities, as far as, we have an easement through the property for the main sewer line that runs to Carousel Carpets. I, like Roger, have struggled with ways to try to make ag pay. I've been trying to grow hay, I've talked to grape growers, you know, you can't put in big ponds for all the stuff they want for grapes to support maybe a 14-acre vineyard. With what I make from hay, I don't even pay half of the property taxes, let alone any of the money that's put into pumping water to try to irrigate it. It's, it's a piece of ag land surrounded by development that is not economically feasible to do anything with ag, and I don't know what I'd come in there and try to do that I wouldn't get complaints from all the houses all along the north end. If your concern is that rezoning this would cause a leapfrog effect into other agricultural areas, north of me is, there is no more ag. It's R3, SR, commercial, all the way along the north end. The south end is owned by the Mendocino Redwood Company, and if they wanted to maintain a buffer between the sawmill and anything that went on on the north end of 15, they've got 20-some acres to do that with. And I don't know how the, you know, that ag parcel is going to be an economical viable unit. And as I've said before, before this board, I think allowing the transition of some ag lands in already compromised areas like this takes pressure off larger blocks of ag land that aren't, that don't have this much development directly adjacent to them. And I also feel that the fact that the planning staff has pointed out that this is necessary for future housing needs should carry some kind of weight. And I, you know, I would like to see it mixed use, which maybe 10 years from now, something would be, would happen, but, you know, with today's economy, nothing's going to happen, but I just feel that there's so much development around it, that a viable ag operation has already been compromised. Both the two neighbors involved support the preferred project, and I'd hope that you would too.
Thank you. Yeah, any question from board members? Thank you. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think we're getting some important clarification. Mr. Nicole owns the northern portion of that parcel, maybe consistent with the little jog on the west. If you drew across to the east, is that roughly your property?
Yeah, I own less than a third of that parcel.
Right.
My property starts right here, and comes straight up to there.
Right, right, to that little jog.
And all the way around this whole property line is developed.
Right.
There's no ag land north to leapfrog people wanting to rezone. This area down here is all the Redwood Company, and if they want to maintain a buffer for the sawmill in this area with some commercial zoning and things that are allowed in a mixed-use development, they have the opportunity to do that. But both, there's only two owners involved here, and both of us support the mixed use, and I don't really see this being industrial already, where it would compromise any other ag property, where, you know, somebody's going to come in and say, "You zoned this ag, so let's zone..." This is all developed. Another thing that I don't know if you've realized is that the transportation portion of the Ukiah Valley Area Plan calls for bringing Orchard Avenue up the railroad tracks right through this property, as well as coming, their preferred route for access to the east side of the river is a road that comes off of Redemaier Road that crosses and comes through here and ties in with the 101 ramp right here.
Do you want to bet on how feasible both of those are?
You know, it's all in the future, I know, but this basically is in the path of your plan, the staff's plan for development. And, I mean, I don't, not proposing to rezone 18 acres in the middle of something like this. We're talking about something that's got SR all here, this was just rezoned, R3 is part of a, some kind of a plan the county had to meet the requirements of a lawsuit. This area in here is R3 now. This is a mobile home park, and I've had issues with them because they, their trailers are too close to the property line, and in order to solve the problem, I did a boundary line adjustment with them to give them more space so they didn't have to move their trailers, but they're at the bare minimum distance from this property. And, you know, even cutting hay, we try to be sensi, and disking, we try to be sensitive that we don't get dust on these people, and, and then we try to, not to do it during times of day, it's going to bother people, but we're right up against R3 zoning, SR zoning, mobile home park, and feasibility, I mean, I brought grape growers and managers from grape vineyards in there, and they just kind of look at me and say, "Well, you can't put in this infrastructure you need to support a vineyard for what would be left there would be, after you put in ponds and so on, would maybe be 14 acres." It's, it's not feasible, and they will not give me any kind of a pre-planning contract. And, hey, I'm getting a dollar a bale, and maybe I get a thousand bales, that's $1,000. My property taxes are $6,000. It's, it doesn't pencil out. You add in there the cost of electricity to pump water to irrigate it, and it's just like, I think I heard Roger say they lost $50,000 on the pears. This was a pear orchard years ago, the previous owner tore them out, and I own property adjacent to it, so I bought the property and the... and gave him a lifetime estate on it. He's since passed away, but since then, the only agricultural ventures have been hay.
Right, but hay is a holding pattern because you don't intend to make ag use to the property. But I think you've clarified a lot of things.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown, I would suggest a compromise motion that you might consider, and that would be to rezone Mr. Nicole's property, but to have the, and then to rezone the MRC property industrial. Because I really don't want to put RR1 up against the mill. That's going to be nothing but problems. And I think as the timber industry does come back, they will have a need for that land.
Might be worker housing. I'm not willing to change my motion.
Okay, I'll be voting no.
I have a question for staff, because my concern when I'm looking at the overall colored map, it's like you can see the zone, you can see the zones of usage, and you can see that, I mean, I, my question is, is, I don't, I'm not so concerned with ag designation for this parcel and that that's being compromised if we remove it, but I'm not sure that, just because there's the trailer park directly north, that it's making sense for residential use. To me, that is more of the issue, not the ag continuity, but when you look directly south, it's zoned industrial for a good long distance. So we're breaking that up and going in a new direction, and I want to make sure that it's a smart direction. So I have concerns about residential, that it having a designation of residential use with the mixed use designation that's before us. So could you comment a little bit on that, staff, or planning commission's comments? What a, this idea must have been explored by someone.
Well, when you take a look at these areas, for example, 15, mixed use. Again, with the mixed use, as it was said earlier with regards to the Masonite site, a development plan needs to be submitted when an actual development comes in and takes place. That would be consistent with the U-VAP and with the new zoning designation that we would develop. I think as pointed out by the property owner, there would have to be some sort of a buffer established. And the mixed use gives you that ability to create a series of buffers through different types of uses, where you could have your residential use next to the trailer park, you could have a commercial use, and then a light industrial use. And that would be part of the plan that the developer of the site would have to provide, so that you're not ending up with conflicting land uses. Obviously, you don't want to have a residential development all the way up to the mill site. But you could stage it so, through the mixed use, where you have residential, commercial, light industrial.
And what about protections for the Russian River? That's another concern.
That would be at the time of the development where you would have to establish setbacks. Again, that would be dealt with through a map process, that would be dealt with through a development plan process, and so on. The other thing that I would like to point out for the board's consideration is that when the county was looking at the 50-acre rezonings, one of the problems that the county had was actually getting willing property owners to engage. And most of them came back and said that if there was a mixed use or something that gave them a commercial use, or they wouldn't lose their industrial, their commercial use, yet they could still provide for the residential use, they would consider that. And I think this is what happened with this particular site here, is that, don't take away what I've got, but give me something that, you know, I can keep what I'm doing, but yet I can go ahead and provide for the county's needs and desires.
I think that makes sense. Okay, any additional board questions, so we can go forward with this? So, let's see, we have a motion by Supervisor Brown, a second by Supervisor Pinches, or was it Hamburg?
Pinches.
Okay, and this is on item number 15, and this would be the preferred alternative, preferred project, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So any questions, any clarification needed? So we're going, Supervisor McCowen.
Well, you say it all makes sense, and that's from one perspective. And from another perspective, I'm not sure it does, you know. I, again, don't want to, I want to see the land stay either industrial or ag, that the mill company owns. And I think it would be a mistake to allow the potential that that is no longer available for mill uses. And you can say, "Oh, it's mixed use, but we're just going to do a little of this and a little of that," and pretty soon, there's no industrial.
Well, sometimes, Supervisor, some of us really believe in compromise. So let's go ahead and vote, please.
I'll try to remember that.
Motion passes with Supervisor McCowen dissenting.
All right. Any more that we plan on acting on today? Board input?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to move, and I know this is going to be controversial too, but items 17 through 19.
Oh, it's only 610s.
For the preferred alternative. And I think the one that's going to be the most controversial is Tuleni Lane. And that's going from RR1 to 12,000 acre, yeah, 12,000 square foot, minimum lot size. And, you know, this is a site I'm somewhat familiar with. More than somewhat, I've been familiar with this site for 30 years.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. And, you know, I did have occasion to talk to Planning Commission Chair Greg Nelson about this property, because he had raised some concerns about encroachment on agriculture. And it's true that behind, behind the row of houses here, there is a small vineyard, which is pretty, not really being actively farmed. There are some grapes being grown, but they're not really being harvested, and it's kind of a somewhat deserted little vineyard at this point. There are, however, significant vineyards on the bench above this property. So I do see the issue that's been raised about impingement on agriculture. I do, however, see this as infill. And I think that, you know, there are some multi-generational issues here where people who own properties want to have the option to split their property and allow, you know, a child or a relative to build something along there. It just seems to me to be a pretty contained little community, and I don't, I don't have an objection to moving this from RR1 to SR.
Are you going with the preferred project?
Yes, excuse my voice. I've talked too much. 17 through 19.
Preferred project.
Yes.
And Supervisor Hamburg, it's been seconded for discussion by Supervisor McCowen?
Yes.
Or I would have strongly seconded. And I appreciate all you've said, and I have sat in on discussions before about that particular piece, and I want to support your motion.
Could you pull?
I'm sorry.
Well, if you could just pull them, I'm familiar with 18, that one I'm familiar with. So where are 17 and 19?
Well, actually, 17 is in Supervisor Brown's district. And, you know, it just makes sense to me that around the Forks area, we would be, you know, in keeping with that village concept, that we would be allowing for mixed uses in that area. We have one acre of Ag 40, you know, this is on both sides of State Street, and it just makes sense to me.
And so's 19.
And 19 is similar, from commercial to industrial. I don't have a problem with that.
Which one is 19?
19 is also in Supervisor Brown's district.
Did you see, did you grab this map?
Is that Dunwood? Is that Ackerman Creek there? I believe that's Ackerman Creek running through that parcel, correct?
Is that 19?
Yeah, so it's, it's zone commercial, there's a winery on the north side of the creek, and then they have a vineyard there. But with regard to 18, and I was on the planning commission when this one came forward on more than one occasion, and at that time, what the people were saying very strongly, "Gosh, you know, it's RR1, and we would just like to be able to divide our parcels so that we could give a half acre to the kids." Well, now they've gone from a half acre to the kids, to we want it to be suburban residential, which is 12,000 square foot minimum lot size. So, you know, this has got inflated way beyond what they have consistently said they wanted for years. I don't know why we would do that. I think if we allow the lot splits to take place, that would be a considerable concession to them. And these lands are pretty sensitive, you know. They're on the west side of 101, and if you look at the map, it's the only encroachment into those ag lands for a pretty significant area around there. And it does, so it's already a domino, and if we go to SR, it becomes even more of a domino. I would think that zoning it to allow, you know, half acre lots would be sufficient.
Supervisor?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask planning staff about that. I think it's a good point. Why did we go to 12,000 instead of, I mean, we don't even have a half acre zoning designation, do we?
We do not, sir. So basically, we go to 12,000 square foot minimum lot size, and then from there, we jump to 40,000 square feet, which is just shy of an acre, and that's the RR1. And they're asking to go from RR1 to SR.
So, in other words, that is the step that we have in our zone?
Yes.
That's what I assumed, but I'm glad the issue was raised.
Could we allow a contract rezone that would specify what's allowable?
Well, the contract rezoning would deal with uses, but it doesn't deal with the density because it's your general plan that's taking the precedence here.
So I will withdraw my second. I'm sure you'll find another.
I shall second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Hamburg, we have a second by Supervisor Brown. So I, back to, back to 18 for a minute. You know, I, is there not another action that could accomplish what we're discussing here in terms of a compromise on the lot size? I know you're saying we don't have the existing zoning designations, but is there not something that, another alternative?
Not at the present time, not without having to develop a whole new land use classification and zoning designation.
Okay, Supervisor McCowen.
We've been making up land use classifications as we've gone along. We could have mixed use Tuleni Lane or non-mixed use. Non-mixed use Tuleni Lane.
Well, I remember these discussions in great detail from whenever it was.
03 or so?
No, I wasn't here in 03, so it must have been, I don't know, it seems like we've even gone around more than once, but we had some pretty detailed discussions about the density issue and the compromises therein. You know, at one point, I know I was thinking, if we're talking about, that there might be a point of extending the corridor, and I mean, then this was really considered an extreme viewpoint, if you could move the map so the property goes higher, actually, that strip that's part of the Mendel Wine Company, no, so the map, no, be going the other direction? Yeah, that strip down to the freeway, I thought would be a really good location for housing density, because you could fill in just the part before you start to, yeah, just that, yeah, exactly, just that, and that was considered like, oh, no, don't, don't propose that. So I, then it seemed like it would have continuity with the other development right directly north of it, and that that actually could make sense if you, if we kind of encompassed it all, but...
I would not support that, Madam Chair.
I'm not proposing it now, I'm just saying it's part of the backdrop. But then, other things came out about, as Supervisor McCowen is saying, about the Tuleni Lane, the density, and there were some, there were some real issues there. So how did the, how did the planning commission grapple with this?
Planning Commission just accepted it as the preferred alternative recommendation.
They didn't have any discussions on?
They didn't discuss these properties at all, no.
Okay. Any other concerns, any more comments?
Call for the motion.
What's really wrong with giving a property owner what they want with their property if it's not going to have a negative impact on their neighbors or anything?
Well, I think Supervisor...
I guess I'm a strong believer in private property rights.
I didn't know that.
It's a right, it's not a privilege.
That's new information.
Well, you know, I might catch hell on this one, but I haven't heard any objections from neighboring property owners. Now, maybe they just don't know what's going on. But it would seem like...
They're all noticed.
You know.
I'd like to call for the question.
Yes.
Yeah.
I might be wrong, but...
Point of order?
Yes.
So, I just want to note that I, I would find it difficult to believe that Planning Commissioner Greg Nelson has changed his opinion. I, when I was on the planning commission, he voted, or he spoke very strongly against making this change, so...
That's true, he did.
I do, I do think it's a domino.
That's true. Okay, so the question has been called, we'll use the buttons, please vote.
Motion passes with Supervisor McCowen dissenting.
All right. So where are we with respect to the list? Have we, we still have some?
Madam Chair, I'll invoke the 5:30 rule.
Well, that might be welcome, Supervisor.
I don't know that we're going to be doing our best work from here on out today.
We still, I do have one Supervisor, we had a public comment, and I said that they could come forward.
Supervisor McCowen, you missed your vote. You had to do that at 5:30.
No, we reworded it to make it clear.
So we will conclude all of our business, we will not go forward with the rest of the items on our agendas, which were rather few.
I do have one item.
Okay, well, first I'm going to go to public comment.
Okay, do we have to continue this hearing?
Yes. Yes.
Well, the 5:30 rule continues it by rule to our next meeting.
But it eliminates all further business, so everything else is going to have to wait.
Well, we do...
Well, unless we have closed session or an urgency item.
Yeah, which we don't.
Do we have a date for the record?
So we're not going to hear from the public, is that correct?
We can hear from the public.
Okay, let's hear from the public, there's only one item. If you want, you want me to just take care of it, Tony?
We need a date certain.
The 17, it's the 21st.
21st.
The Farm Bureau folks have requested a copy of the opinion that we gave the Board of Supervisors regarding the stormwater ordinance. I don't release my opinions unless the board wants, would like to do it.
Make it an agenda item for...
Okay.
Or they can request it from a board member, and a board member can give it to them.
That's what I wanted to bring up. I think we should release it. There's a lot of controversy out in the community. They're asking a lot of questions about the legality of it, and I would very much like to release it.
So Supervisor McCowen?
Madam Chair, if I may, to County Council, do you have any concerns about releasing? Then let's release it.
Thank you very much.
Any objection? Well, do we, we don't need a formal action on it, do we? So there's no objection to that. Okay, so we are adjourned until the 21st.